Good evening, may I please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call this meeting water. Statement of notice. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, a notice of this meeting has been provided as follows. On April 28, 2016, notice was sent to Home Lucy, Star Ledger, Local Source, and the Clerk of the Municipality. By state law, there is no smoking permitted in this building at any time. In addition to the listed items on this agenda, this board of education may discuss and act upon other items not specifically referred to herein as of the regularly scheduled monthly board meeting under the Sunshine Law. Roll call. Mrs. Beviano, President. Mrs. Birch?
Here.
Mrs. Slater?
Here.
Mr. Woolrath?
Here.
Mr. Colvis?
Here.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Here.
Mrs. Bellani?
Here.
Mr. Alvarez?
Excuse me.
Mrs. Suda?
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the workshop comes October 13, 2016, and the regular meeting of October 18, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Woolrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mr. Alvarez? I'm sorry, Mrs. Suda?
Yes.
Comments from the public, agenda items only. Seeing none, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish all of our board members, our students, parents, faculty, and staff are very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. We have a lot to be thankful for here in the Linden Public School District. And I'm extremely thankful for the amazing staff and amazing students that we have here in Linden. I'd like to give our monthly HIV report. This evening, this month, excuse me, we had 28 incidents reported. Seven of those were validated as being HIV incidents, 15 were not, and six were undetermined. The actions taken for those incidents were counseling, detention, school suspension, and out-of-school suspension, and in all instances, the victims were counseled. I want to give a special recognition to the school, aid, faculty, and staff. Prior to tonight's meeting, I was invited, and there were a few board members there also, to attend their Feast of Literacy event. They had well over 150 parents signed up for the event, and the idea was to instill a love of reading in their students. They did this through a FAST grant, which they received through the Linden Education Association and the NJEA. And at this program, the students and their parents and their family members rotated through a menu of four stations. Three of the stations focused on different literary genres, such as fiction, nonfiction, poetry, and they featured fun activities. One of the activities was on the stage in the gymnasium. They had a campfire set up, and chairs and blankets where the kids would sit, and the teachers were reading stories. The fourth station was a Thanksgiving feast in the cafeteria. So as they rotated through the stations, they also, you know, they were rented, they received books, and then they had a nice family meal at the end. So I want to recognize and thank the faculty and staff of the school. They've done an absolutely amazing job, and I think the board members who were there might mention that tonight also. We have some students here tonight, some student athletes here tonight with their coaches that I'd like to recognize, and I would ask that Mr. Woolrath and Mrs. Suda, please join me on the stage. Our girls have had outstanding seasons in both volleyball and girls soccer. So first, I'd like to recognize the girls soccer team. I'm going to say a few words, and then I'm going to ask Coach Mahalit to come up and say a few words and introduce the students. Students, when you come up, you're going to receive a certificate, which I know you will treasure forever, and we want you to stand here and pose for a picture, okay? So our 2016 girls varsity soccer team won a school record, 13 games this season, which is the most in our 36-year history of the girls' soccer team. During the season, this team broke or tied several school records. Most wins, most shutouts, longest winning streak. They qualified for the state tournament and two rounds of the Union County Tournament. We have several senior players that are receiving postseason awards for their play by the Union County Conference, the NJGSCA, and/or the Union County GSCA. They are Mahalia Saris, Ashley Paulino, Brittany Bornsted, Flora McEludus, and Rachel Roach. These will be given to those young ladies at an event held later this year. It was truly a wonderful season. I want to ask Coach Mahalit to come up and say a few words about these girls. Mahalit, you got some nice certificates too.
I'd like to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Robotozy, and Steve Vienna, the Athletic Director, for recognizing these young ladies and how hard they worked. This group of seniors, in their four-year span, one total of 40 games, which is the most in 36 years of girls soccer, which have been involved, 27 of them, so, yeah, excuse me, I'm a little cold here. Every team needs leadership, and these seniors provided that leadership. And my assistant coaches came back and would say that the freshmen said, "I want to be like Brittany, I want to be like Ashley." They looked up to these seniors. These seniors are excellent role models. They're all in National Honor Society. They're all top student class, so for them, I'm thankful. I really appreciate that all they've done for me. I'd like to bring up my assistant, please, Jane Munzer. My volunteer assistant and former Linden High School All-State soccer player, Nicole Serica. She's been with me for the past five years, and she makes me look good. Our first young lady, Janelli Alguida. Diana Montalvo. Shannon Clark. Nina Parker. Lindsay Faria. Brittany Bornsted. Brittany had a fabulous year this year. She was the straw in the spring to drink, playing middle of the field. Mahalia Saris. Mahalia was a scoring machine the last two years, did an outstanding job. Rachel Roach. Rachel was our enforcer in the defensive middle. Kelly Buckley. Angela Peralo Rodriguez. Marty Dorkin. Brooke Byer. Chiara Calasa. Flora McEludus. Flora was our sleeper and outstanding season right there. Better known as Flora. Mary Jo Resinto. This young lady fought through two ACL injuries and brought herself back to play with us this year. Olivia Campos. Rebecca Orcha. And last but not least, Ashley Paulino. Ashley was our goalkeeper, had an outstanding year. She ranks as probably the best goalkeeper to come out of Linden in a long time. That's our group, and again, thank you very much. I hope you all have a wonderful Thanksgiving. And congratulations to the girls volleyball team, my outstanding year.
And we'll also post this picture on our Facebook page, so you can also get it from there, which helps with helping take a picture. So Mrs. Slater just reminded me that Mr. Mahalit was her track coach in high school. So now, I'm not sure what that says about Mrs. Slater. Congratulations to our girls varsity soccer team. The great thing is that, Coach mentioned this, is that all of our students are recognized for what they do on the field, but Coach made sure to recognize that many of these students are in National Honor Society, they do very well academically, and will go on to do well for your colleges. So good luck to all of our girls. We have another outstanding group of young ladies who are here tonight. Our 2016 varsity girls volleyball team. The girls volleyball team finished with an overall record of 17 and 5. That's impressive, 17 and 5. This is the program's second division title in four years. The 17 wins matches our school's record, which was set just three years ago. The girls qualified for the NJSIAA State Tournament for the fifth time in the last six seasons. This particular team reached the semifinal round of the Union County Tournament for the first time in its history. And they almost won a really hard-fought match against Union County and ended up winning the whole event. I'm sorry I didn't bring that up. But we're very, very proud of these young ladies, and this group is led by an outstanding coach. I'd like to bring up Coach Jason McKee to say... Okay, thank you, Dr. Robotozy. I'd like to begin by thanking our Board of Education Superintendent, Dr. Robotozy, as well as Mr. Vienna, our Athletic Director, for recognizing us this evening. I'd also like to congratulate the girls soccer team on a very impressive season this year. Great job, please. As Dr. Robotozy mentioned, we had an outstanding season. This is by far the best season we've had in our program's short history, I'll say. We're graduating a lot of seniors, and I just want them to know how thankful I am for them because, you know, basically, they're a large part of building our program as we continue to move forward, and, you know, they're going to be greatly, greatly missed. You know, we had a lot of great stats, and we accumulated a lot of wins, but the one stat or statistic that I'm going to remember the most from this team is that we have 14 members on our team. All 14 members maintain a 3.0, 3-point average, as well as... Nine of the 14 players maintain a 3.7 or higher, so I'm very, very proud of them. They truly epitomize what it is to be a student athlete, so great job, please. At this time, I'd like to call each one up and recognize them. Okay, Junior Deja Ampe. Senior Amber Berlinski. Amber had to work tonight, so they juggle a lot of tasks. We have Junior Tony Freenard. Tony is honorable mention, Union County Conference Mountain Division, so that's a great achievement for her. Senior Giselle Kiki Garcia. Junior Charisma Lewis. If Charisma looks tired, she just had a very long girls basketball practice. Junior Alexis Rodriguez. Senior Captain Karina Rosado. Karina was first-team All-Division, second-team All-Conference, and All-County this season. Sophomore Christina Ventoro. Senior Captain Abastas. Our team manager, I don't know what I'd do without him, Christian Pena. Know all your lives. And Senior Noel Williams. Noel was first-team All-Division, first-team All-County, first-team All-Conference. She's our school's all-time leader in blocks and right-up-their-kill. She's absolutely outstanding, and she maintains a 4.0 GBA. Congratulations to these young ladies, our fine student athletes, and our beheading Board of Education. We're proud to recognize you two. Madam President, that is my report.
Thank you, Dr. Robotozy. Are there, is there an adjournance report? Nothing. Standing committees, curriculum instruction, if there are... Thank you, Madam President. The Curriculum Instruction Committee, upon recommendation of Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent, present the following 38 motions to the Linden Board of Education for approval. Items 1 through 7 deal with the approval of specialized programs for the placement of classified students, determination of out-of-district placements, the approval of payments for related services as per child study team evaluations, the approval of one-to-one parent professionals, the approval of transportation, and determination of related services. Item 8 approves home instruction services provided by outside agencies. 9 and 10 grant approval to purchase consultative and direct services for district students. 11 approves facilities to provide crisis response and services to district students as needed. Item 12 approves enrollment of students for the 2016-17 school year on a tuition basis from the State of New Jersey. 13 approves the tuition costs for a student enrolled in Edge Border Park by the state. 14 amends border action on PASC and I reports. 15 grants permission for use of facilities in school activities. 16 approves district field trips. 17 approves curriculum writing. 18 approves training for district staff. 19 approves an after-school tutorial program at School 10. 20 approved professional development activities. 21 approves Linden resident students to participate in the inter-district public school choice program commencing in 2017-18 school year. 22 approves the charter school enrollment. 23 approves edges-year courses for 12th grade students. 24 grants approval of the 2017 district Chinese New Year celebration schedule. 25 grants permission for a Kane University graduate school student to conduct a survey with teachers at School 2 for research related to required courses. Items 26 through 31 grant approval to submit the non-public technology initiative program agreement and the non-public security aid program agreement between the Sinai Christian Academy and the Linden Public School District to the county superintendent and appoint the designated program contacts. Item 32 grants approval to enter into a memorandum of agreement between Kane University Diversity Council and the Linden Public School District for staff to participate in courses entitled Teaching the Holocaust and Teaching Prejudice Reduction. Item 33 and 34 grant approval to participate in the CILA by Literacy and authorizes the administration of world language assessments as the examination. 35 grants permission to establish district bilingual ESL parent advisory committee. Item 36 grants approval to submit the NCLV performance report. 37 approves the cost of refreshments for the Chinese New Year celebration participants. 38 approves the superintendent's determination in actions taken for all reporting incidences of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as discussed at the October 18, 2016 regular meeting. Madam President, at work curriculum instruction, items 1 through 38, I respectfully ask for a second.
Sorry.
Discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Beviano?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mrs. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Woolrath?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes, however, your standing number 18.
Mr. Tappoleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Suda?
Yes.
Management operations, Mrs. Bellani?
There are 33 items under management and operation for approval. Item 1 accepts the following retirements with regret. Dr. Robotozy?
Thank you, Mrs. Bellani. Russell Cruss has worked for the Linden Board of Education as a custodian for 38 years. He began working as a custodian in 1979. He's been a reporting custodian since 2006, and in 2010, he was appointed the reporting custodian at School 6, where he has been and will be retiring from. Deborah Schellinger has worked for the Linden Board of Education for 26 years. She worked at McMathes Middle School, School 9, School 2, and Linden High School. And my very good friend Ellen Wilder, aka Purplicious, has worked for the Linden Board of Education for a whopping 47 years. She's been working in Linden since 1969. The vast majority of her career at Linden High School. I want to wish these employees a long, happy, and healthy retirement. Thank you.
Item 2 amends board action on best management... Item two amends board action on past management operation reports. Item three accepts the resignation of staff. Item four is the appointment of staff. Item five approves the transfer of staff. Item six approves leaves of absences. Item seven approves a change in degree for staff. Item eight approves staff as professional development presenters. Item nine approves office staff to assist during parent teacher conferences. Items ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two are the appointment of staff. Item nineteen approves clubs at Linden High School. Item twenty-three appoints volunteer coaches for the winter season. Item twenty-four is the abandonment of position by an employee. Items twenty-five and twenty-six are recommendations that employees be placed unpaid administratively pending completion of evaluations. Items twenty-seven through thirty-three are the appointments of staff in various substitute positions. Madam President, I move Management and Operations, items one through thirty-three, and respectfully ask for a second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Wolra?
Um, yes, abstaining from number sixteen, I mean, number six, Gia Minita and Stephanie Webb.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Suda?
Yes.
Support Operations, Mr. Topaleski?
Thank you, Madam President. Support Operations Committee, upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrative Board Secretary, present the following twenty-five finance motions and eleven facilities motions to the Board of Education for approval. Items one through six are regular board business dealing with the acceptance of the Business Administrative Board Secretary's certifications as of October thirty-first, 2016. No major account or fund has been over expended. Board Secretary's report for the month of October, 2016. Authorization for the payments of salaries and supplemental payroll for November, uh, 2016. Draw warrants in the amount specified in favor of person's name and list of transfers and adjustments for the month of October, 2016. Item seven is Treasurer's Report for the month of October, 2016. Item eight is Student Activities Report for Linden High School for the months of July, August, September, and October, 2016. Item nine is to amend board actions on past agendas from April twenty-fifth, item thirty-five A, and, um, August twenty-fourth, items nine and fifteen. Accept funds in the various sources, including E-Rate and IDEA amounts of, that wind up totaling two-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. Items seventeen through nineteen approve contracts with Harvard Consultants, Dickerson Corporation, and Strinzy Holaback. Item twenty is approve the naming of the Linden Alternative School located at one-seventy Huston Street as the Academy of Excellence. Item twenty-one approve submission of the 2016 IDEA final report. Item twenty-two authorize submission of amendment to IDEA 2017 Annual Report. Item twenty-three is approve submission of the 2016-17 District Report of Transportation Resident Students Summer Report to the Union County Superintendent Schools for the November eighteenth, 2016 deadline. Item twenty-four is to approve the following, uh, parent transportation routes for, uh, school year sixteen-seventeen. And item twenty-five is to declare the following as surplus equipment obsolete and unusable and the disposal in accordance with District Policy, uh, thirty-two-sixty. Facilities, item one is to amend, uh, board actions, uh, on past operation, uh, Facilities Report, uh, from September and August. Items two through eleven, the use of facilities at no charge as requested by A. Cataline Principal School Four, I. Scamardella Principal School Five, and Rodriguez Principal School Eight, D. Hernandez, and T. Grissette, President School Nine, and Six PTA's, uh, P. Saldana, Field Courier, Linden Youth Soccer Association, Sports Supervisor Steve Linden, Department of Public Property and Community Services Jay Anderson, Program Director Morning Star Community Development Corporation W. Adams, Muncie District Executive, Boy Scouts of America M. Melendo, Manager General Operations, New Jersey School Boards Association, and Y. Horry, Principal Linden High School. Madam President, there are no questions. If further discussion, I move... Oh, item twelve, I'm sorry. No, I said, I meant, I, I'm sorry. That was, item twelve was included in item one, uh, as an amendment to a past report. Items one through twenty-five in finance, and one through eleven in facilities, uh, agenda, and seek approval, are, and one through twelve, I'm sorry, and seek a second.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
Mrs. Beviana?
Yes.
Mrs. Birch?
Yes.
Mr. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Wolra?
Yes.
Mr. Colvis?
Yes.
Mr. Topaleski?
Yes.
Mrs. Bellani?
Yes.
Mrs. Suda?
Yes.
Leading the policy, Mrs. Birch? State delegate?
State delegate, yes. Uh, this past Saturday, we had a, uh, fortunate to serve on the Legislative Committee. We had a Legislative Committee meeting and trying to updating us on, uh, recent occurrences. Uh, one of the things is the new ESSA, uh, Act. We don't know exactly what's going to happen with that because of the recent election as to how many regs are going to be put, tied in with that money. Uh, so that remains to be seen. As far as the School Accountability Act, uh, there are two phases of it. They're, uh, sunsetting. Uh, the Commissioner, the new Commissioner of Education put forth some changes, which include the superintendent salary cap, and although the salary cap is going to go away as long as the changes have been there, uh, there are significant, uh, changes in how, in the amount of money and, uh, how things will carry on from there, assuming that they don't go away totally. Uh, since next September, uh, next November, uh, the entire state legislature and the governor are up for election. So whether those stay in place or not remains to be seen. Other than that, uh, there will be a delegate assembly meeting, uh, in December. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Topaleski. Uh, I'm the county delegate. Uh, Mr. Colvis, Mr. Alvarez, myself, and Mr. Topaleski were at the meeting last night, which was held at the Westwood, and the topic was special education. Uh, the presentation was a really good presentation and enlightened the board members about the rules and regulations of classifying students and, um, the various needs and how to, um, how the process actually works and parents' rights. Educational Services Commission?
No, somebody else might have.
Alex White. Alex White, okay. He's there, uh, this evening. Let's see. EST, okay. For Paris.
Thank you.
Mrs. Birch?
Thank you, Madam President. We held our parent EST meeting Wednesday, November second, at the Linden Board of Education Office. We started at six-thirty with some refreshments. We had parents from School Two, School Five, School Nine, McMathis, LHS, and we had eight moms and two dads that attended. Some of the things that were discussed were, uh, the cleanup of the jungle gym area, the soccer, soccer field at School Number Nine. Uh, the parents were saying that some of the, um, older students were coming and leaving garbage there, and during the soccer games on the weekends, they were leaving their water bottles and garbage, and they wanted to know if, um, they can actually let the teams know and even the custodians if they can look into, uh, cleaning up some of the fields after, uh, the activities. We, um, also were asked about, um, the different schools and the different policies with, um, having classroom parties. I know that that's being discussed and worked on, and, um, hopefully will be in place for our Christmas school parties. A parent also brought up the fact that, um, at the, at McMathis Middle School, the feminine product dispensers were not stocked all the time, um, and we did take care of that situation. They also said that the girls' rooms had no mirrors on the second floor at McMathis, so we're looking into that also. They were inquiring about our before-care for students, um, and when we were possibly going to be getting that up, so I do have a vision on that, and we will be bringing that back to our next meeting. Uh, some positive things that they talked about, um, they were very, very happy with Mr. Fingerlin, um, over at McMathis. They said he's attempting to build great morale with the children. He, um, greets the children, uh, has positive things going on. Uh, one of the great things that they did, they taped him to a wall, and they raised two-hundred dollars for the Cancer Foundation. So kudos to, uh, Mr. Fingerlin. We also had Mr. Pendleton stop by and talk to us about, um, a recommendering program, and, um, we're just awaiting a flyer from him so that we can send that information out to our parents. And, um, some of the parents were very, very happy with our ROTC AMI inspection. They said it was a wonderful representation of our district. And our next meeting will be Thursday, December first, at six-thirty at the Board Office, and we hope to see everyone there. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch. Um, can I be, ask you to be, do EST for students?
Absolutely, thank you. Uh, we had our student EST meeting Thursday, November seventeenth. Ms. Lewis and Mr. Fakiti were the advisors and attendants. We had four freshmen, four sophomores, four juniors, and three seniors. Four were boys and eleven were girls. The students were having some IT concerns and issues, so we invited Mr. Walters and his team to come and help them. So a big thank you to them for coming out and answering all of their IT questions that they had, because we surely couldn't answer all of them. We are still having some lunch issues, so we are inviting Pom-Tonian to come to our next meeting with the students and talk with the students so they can get a better understanding of what's going on in the cafeteria with the lunches. The students did say, um, they were very happy to notice that the lunch ladies were wearing their gloves down when serving their food. Um, they're still not happy with the portions of the chicken and the fries, um, especially in the later lunches. They've said they're getting probably not as much as what the other lunches are getting. They become very small in the later lunches. The kids are very ambitious. They're looking to, um, try to do a lot of other things in the district. Um, they want to, uh, hold a talent show. They want to do students versus faculty, um, games such as volleyball and basketball. They want to, uh, try to create a step and a rugby club. So those are some of the positive things. They're looking to, they were trying to bring back the junior prom. They're not sure if they want to do it big or keep it small, maybe have it in the gymnasium. Uh, their next school dance is going to be in February. It's going to be a winter wonderland. Just some housekeeping issues that they discussed. Um, they were talking about the restrooms not smelling so nice, but, um, it was good to hear the students say that some of that was because of user error, which was an awesome way to put it. Um, they said that the girls' bathrooms never have toilet paper, and the locker rooms don't have toilet paper also, and, uh, one of the lights on the first floor was twitching. So, um, we had a very productive meeting, and, um, it's always nice to hear the students and, uh, some of, they, they always have positive things to say along with some of their concerns. So it's very, it's a great time to sit down and talk with them. Our next meeting, it's going to be December fifteenth at one PM in the library with them, and hopefully Pom-Tonian will be there also. That concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Birch. Um, the EST for students, I did want to let everybody know that there are three meetings scheduled. Uh, it'll be January...
Special Ed.
I'm sorry.
Special Ed.
I'm sorry. Um, Special Education, EST for Special Education, which is our leave meetings. Uh, it's, uh, Thursday, January the nineteenth, March the sixteenth, and May the eighteenth, and the topics will be sent out, um, I guess, in the email for those evenings. Um, any unfinished questions?
Uh, first, I just want to take a few seconds to extend congratulations to Mrs. Suda, Mrs. Beviana, Mr. Walra, uh, Mr. Martucci, he's here. And I have also been warned that I'm not allowed to make anybody cry, so I will not be speaking about, um, a woman who spent too short of time on the board, someone that I've come to respect and admire, someone who I think is a powerhouse for children, and the fact that she won't be returning is very, very sad to me. So I won't mention her at all. But like I did at the six-month mark of being on the board, um, I'd like to take a few seconds to look back on my one year here. I want to learn, because I've learned a lot from everybody. And I think one of the things that weighs the board, we do a lot of great things, and I've said this over and over again, that I do believe in Dr. Robatose's vision, and I'm glad that we're working together. However, um... We as a board, I think, are still, still in desperate need of working on better communication with the community. Um, I, I think we've taken strides. I think we need to work together, be a little bit more transparent, and getting the information out there, maybe letting the community understand why we're making the decisions we make, because I think a lot of the board members spend their time in the community, talking to parents outside of meetings, um, because they're intimidated to speak up, to ask questions. They can't make it to a board meeting, and I think if, a lot of the questions can be answered in, in other ways. So I think that's one of the things that we as a board should work on for the coming year, and I look forward to working with Mr. Martucci. And I would just like to ask whoever's going to be, um, one, or the president of the board next year, as a new board member this year, I walked in blind, and while everybody was helpful, I really was fumbling my first few months around, not knowing basically anything. I know Mr. Wolra and Mr. Slater also had some concerns when they first came on the board, so I really think it would be a great start to get Mr. Martucci in the fold, get him up and running as soon as possible, and get him all the information he needs so he can do the best he can.
I can, uh, I can let you know that there is new board member training, and it is for the weekend, the first weekend in January. It is, actually, the training is mandatory for new board members as well, but the first one is January sixth, seventh, and eighth. And I'm not sure if it's Mary. Do you guys remember?
It's in Princeton. Oh, Princeton, uh, Marriott Forest.
Okay, and then there's a second, uh, one in March, and I don't recall the dates, but the sooner you go, the more enlightened you'll be on your responsibilities as a board member. It's mandatory, but... And the other thing is, I spoke to Gwen Thornton, Board of Education, um...
Field Service.
Field Service Rep, um, for us to have a sit-down sometime month of December, so she can go over our responsibilities and our reorganization of how we want to conduct our business, um, for the 2017 school year. So I'll be reaching out to her, and if it's okay with the board, I would like to do it during the month of December.
Yes, yes.
Because I think we're... And Mr. Marti...
Martin?
No, I'm sorry. Mr. Martucci also would be allowed to attend as well. So I think it, it would be helpful. I'm just saying, you're lucky to join us as well, because you did sit with us. So, um, but I think it's a, it's a good idea for us to start the new year fresh.
On that same line, there, uh, School Boards is running, uh, I believe in December, maybe the end of November.
There is.
the end of November, three different new board members and not-so-new board members workshops, they're at night, it's just a short one, I guess more like to do some things about newly-elected board members. There's the one in, for the middle is, is it Jackson, is that the one?
Jackson, one is in.
New Brunswick, I think.
No.
Is this, is this?
Yeah, there might be, one is Jackson, but I'm not sure which one they were talking about for Jackson, but there, there are three of them, but one's in the northern part of the state, one is in the middle, and one is at the bottom.
I believe the middle is New Brunswick, I was just looking at that today.
So, that's also an option for the board members. The more you go to these things, the better you'll be as a board member, so.
Does anybody else have any? We'll start, Mrs. Slater, you want to go first?
You can go first.
You want to go last?
Just a choice.
It's not a choice.
I'd like to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and please enjoy this time with your families. I'd like to take congratulations to Mrs. Sudek, Mrs. Beviano, Mr. Martucci, and Mr. Worab, who are returning in January, and I'd also like to say to my fellow board member Lolita Slater, thank you for all that you do for our children in the city and in the district, who truly are here for the children, and you give your all and everything that you do. This is not a goodbye, until see you soon. Thank you. Bear with me, I actually have a few things to say tonight for a change. First, we have made here many things about our students in our high school that are negative, and the quick things that go on around here are very rarely spoken about. And I want to read to you this evening a letter that we received from a former graduate, 1942 graduate of Linden High. I personally know this gentleman, stuck dead hand and raising me to the woman that I am today. "We came out of the doctor's office the same time Linden High School was letting out. The walks were full of the students letting off steam. I opened my van's door and huffed my wife in. I closed the door and walked around the back to get in on the driver's side. As I opened the door and prepared to get up into the van, I saw and felt a big hand clutch my arm. I was shocked. Why did that fellow cross the street and grab my arm? In my mind's eye, I thought, here goes my wallet. I tightened the grip on my cane, getting ready for battle. 'May I help you?' he said, as he boosted me in and closed the door. I lowered my window to thank him. Too late, he was back across the street with his friends again. By the time I humped in my wallet for a tip and a thank you, they were nowhere in sight. They maybe had gotten a ride or turned around a corner." The purpose of this letter is to tell you, all is not lost, there are many good people in this generation, we only hear of the bad ones. "Your labor is growing fruit, the fruit is starting to ripen, and this youth is proof. Half heart, Al Noviello." Al was a graduate of our high school, Linden High School in 1942. His children, his grandchildren have graduated from this school, and his great-grandson is currently registered in the Linden Public Schools. To this young man, since Mr. Noviello is unable to personally thank you, I want to say thank you on behalf of his family for taking a couple of minutes to assist a senior citizen. You have managed to change the family's perspective of our youth today, and for that, I am forever I'd like to congratulate my running mates, Mrs. Suhudak and Mr. Worab, on your win, and Mr. Martucci, your retirement did not last very long, the next three years will be full of hard work, and I know it's something that you will bring a new perspective to our board events, so congratulations to you. On Wednesday, I had the pleasure of attending a breakfast at School 5 for the families, which was through the Core American Education Week. I had a great time speaking with the children, the staff, and their parents about School 5 and the functions that go on there. On Thursday night, Mrs. Birch and I had the privilege of attending the First Annual Girls' Volleyball Awards banquet. I was very impressed with these young ladies, not only for their love of the game and for the love of their coach, Mr. Fakiti, but because each and every one of these 14 girls have managed to maintain a grade point average of 3.5 and above. One young lady has a 4.0. This evening, I also attended School 8's Feast of Literacy, which was provided through the Fast Grant and the NJEA. They had Thanksgiving dinner for the families, they did a poetry cafe, Beatnik-style. The kids walked into that room and had no idea what Beatnik even meant, but the music was going, they were snapping, and they were doing their poetry. They also introduced the children to Under the Stars, which is a nonfiction section, and Once Upon a Rod, which was the fiction section. It introduced the children to the different genres, and it was a delight to see the staff, the families, and the children having a great time. And I promise I will do my best not to get upset, but I have to talk to Miss Lolita. I'd like to take a moment to thank Miss Slater for her time on the Linden Board of Education. Our youth have always held a special place in Lolita's heart, and I know she will continue to be a voice for them. Although she will not be on the dais with us, I do expect her to be at our meetings, sitting in the audience, and on the other side of that mic, continually advocating for them. I am honored to be able to call you my friend, and I look forward to many more breakfasts to discuss anything that's on our minds, and I know that the future will always be bright for you. That concludes my report.
I'm not going to give more than that, I want to congratulate everybody who won, and I'm going to miss you. Thanks for your time.
And I express the same sentiments. Congratulations to those who won the election, and Lolita, we're really going to miss you. You did a great job, and hope to see you back.
I also have a few things to add. I would like to congratulate Ms. Barbara Brady and the dance team, we were fortunate enough to witness them perform at the School Boards Conference, and they did an excellent job, I wish I could move like that, they did a really great job performing. I also attended School 8's event this evening, and have to say that there was a tremendous turnout, full of parents, and I love seeing parents involved, especially all the ones that are here tonight. We have about 6,000 kids enrolled in our schools, and it's the same four to five faces that attend all the Board of Education meetings, so hopefully in the new year, we can really increase that turnout, and hopefully parents will be able to turn out to our meetings, but I am looking forward to that. Congratulations to Mr. Martucci, Ms. Suhudak, and Ms. Beviano, and I definitely am in agreement with everyone here that we lost a tremendous asset to the Board of Education, the person who as soon as I got on, before I got on, reached out to me, and I had no idea who she was, and from the time that she found out that I was interested in the board, reached out to me, wanted to meet with me, and just explained everything to me, gave me packets and pamphlets full of information, and went out of her way almost every day, even if it was 11 o'clock at night and I was frustrated with something, trying to walk me through something. Like Tracy said, it's not the end, I know that things happen for a reason, and all of her other programs, I'm going to get a lot of attention from her, and she's going to do great things for our community and the students all around, and kids all around. So, good luck, Lolita.
Is it my turn yet? But I'm still going to make it after. Go ahead.
Well, first, I just want to give the entire board a thank you for giving me an opportunity to serve on this board, it's been an exciting and eventful year, it's also been very humbling. I got a chance to learn the role of the Board of Education, as well as the role of a board member, which I didn't know prior to getting on the board. I also met many parents and students in our district, and it gave me an opportunity to really learn about our parents' concerns, our students' concerns, got a couple of friends that I'll be sitting in the audience with moving forward. It was just a really extraordinary experience to just be a part of this. I value the relationships that I've built with each of you on this board, we had some funny moments, we had some sad moments, we had some mad moments, but I mean, I guess that's what families do. I'm committed to still standing with you guys as we set efforts to just make a strong foundation in this district, and again, I thank you for the opportunity, and those who know me know that it doesn't stop at this table, and again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be at the table with you guys.
I want to thank you too for serving with us and being part of our family, and we know it's not goodbye, it's going to be see you soon, and I owe my friend Lilo down there a batch of cookies, so, as promised, but I want to thank you for all your time and effort that you've spent with us, and for the children of this district. For the three Rs, the meeting is going to be in North Brunswick on December 6th, both of you who want to attend.
It's open.
Yeah, it's there, it's open. The other thing is, I was very proud of our ROTC, it's been a busy month, but they had their annual inspection, and I have to tell you, they had a flag ceremony, there was not a dry eye in that gymnasium as they folded the flags, and they, at the end of the folding of the flag ceremony, it was presented to the Vietnam veterans, which will be in their, their meaningful, where they will treasure that. The oldest veteran that was there was from World War II, so there are still a few of them around, which I thought was really awesome to see them come in, so I just wanted to let you know a little bit about that. On behalf of the board, I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. I also would like to wish you a happy holiday, the board will not be reorganized until the first week in January for reorganization, so there will not be any, you know, further board meetings until January of 2017, but if you have the time and you have the chance, we have an awesome holiday schedule throughout the district, we have a lot of talented young people that'll be singing their hearts out and performing, and if you get a chance, their, their concerts are on the marquee outside of their buildings, and you can go in and see what an awesome job of the great kids that we have in this district. So, I want to, on behalf of the board and myself, I would like to wish you all a very happy and safe holiday.